Thank you so much. So I remind everyone that the meeting is being telecast and recorded on Channel 14. And remind any member of the public who wishes to make an audio or video recording of the open session of this meeting to notify me as chair and I'll inform the public of the recording as required by the open meeting law. Do we have any public comment tonight? Do we have students? No, we don't have a student either. Oh Nancy, you get to go first. Presentation of March to a Million. I feel bad doing this without Nancy. She's gonna be jealous. Come on up.
Thanks for giving me just a few minutes to celebrate something that was really fun at school. I need to thank Ryan Weber and Kathy Rebusall, all the staff and families, and most especially our students. The video's about three and a half minutes and it really celebrates a way that we found to kind of hook kids and get them to do their math facts because it is just critical in getting them to do some higher level mathematical reasoning and thinking and activities. In the video, two kind of reference points for you. You will hear two students talk about scores and in their Mad Minute, 60 is the highest you can get. So you will hear their scores that they give themselves. And then, the video was taken on the day after we hit our goal and the kids were encouraged to, you know, dress fancy, be a millionaire. So you'll see some kids in some pretty unique outfits.
Just building anticipation, that's all.
Try the refresh button, see if that works.
Oh, Ryan to the rescue. It was gonna work 15 minutes ago, but we were about late. Sorry. Oh, there we go. It looked like it was moving.
Oh, if the speakers are...I know they were working.
As a district, we've been working hard to really find ways to hook kids with our math instruction. We've been looking for levels of engagement, ways to make math meaningful, and we came up with an idea about March Mathness. And inclusive of plans within the month was our goal of March to a Million, where we challenged our Mullen Hall Migos to complete 1 million math facts during the month of March. We also asked community members to help us too. And the outcomes have been just outstanding. I've been working in education for, you know, close to 30 years and we've always been trying to get kids to do their math facts because it's really required for them to, you know, begin to use some higher level mathematical reasoning. And I can't tell you enough about how hard the kids worked and enjoyed doing their math facts because it was a challenge.
March to a Million was a huge success. We had kids begging to do math fact. They would finish one sheet and they would come and ask for more. I've never, in my 30 years of teaching, seen kids want to do math facts as much. In my own class, I do Mad Minute every morning and the kids track their scores. And we looked at their scores from before March Mathness to now, and almost every kid went up by 25 points. All the teachers reported that the fact fluency in their classrooms went way up. And part of the reason, I believe, is that kids who were having difficulty started doing practice sheets so that we could get a million. And as they did the practice sheets, it got easier to do, and so they did more and more. And it just blossomed.
We did this thing called Mad Minute, and I got 60 in subtraction, but I got like 49 before March Mathness, and I got like way more in subtraction. So March Mathness helped me to get better in math facts.
My most favorite thing about March Mathness was that we got to practice to do a lot of math facts in March Mathness. So in Mad Minute, I got 62 times in multiplication and division. And in March Mathness, it helped me to like know my math facts quicker and faster.
They completed 1,186,511 math facts. And they were pleased with themselves. And each teacher had a little whiteboard outside his or her door with the grand total of their math facts. And everybody was looking at everyone else's door and keeping track. And that just kind of rolled along and culminated into a fun and engaging and necessary math
And it cost nothing.
That's awesome. I love it.
So thank you, and we sent out-
As a district, we've been working hard to really find-
We liked it so much, we're gonna listen again.
We sent out many letters to police and fire, JR Brody's, Superlube, the library, the Steamship. I know I'm forgetting someone, but, oh, Atria participated and they corrected their math fact sheets and something. So, thank you for all your help and support and congratulations to our Mullen Hall Migos.
That's awesome. Thank you for sharing.
I just wanna share, Nancy, the experience on the Steamship with the math facts. So I have fellow commuters who I commute with, and, oh, it was the talk of the Steamship. Like everyone doing their math facts, and we all got better. We really did. I've gotta say, the Palmer household did 5,000 math facts and those, my kids were up. They would do paper after paper after paper. It was so fun. And so adults, wherever we were, on the ocean or on land, and kids, we were all enjoying it. So, thank you. Something I hope you'll repeat again.
We are, and PTO's purchasing a plaque so that we can compare our marches over time.
Excellent. That is awesome. I love it.
I just have a comment.
Yeah, please.
No, just, again, similar to what Leah said. Nancy, you do such a great job, and you mentioned that it makes life interesting and fun for the kids. Underlying to that too, it makes it fresh for the staff and friendly for yourself too. You're always doing something over there, so kudos.
Any other praise? Awesome. I'm gonna ask that we actually take the Falmouth gun buyback out of order because I see that the ladies are here and I don't want them to have to wait until an hour from now, if that's all right with everybody, with everyone. So, there was, in your packet, a flyer. Ladies, would you mind coming up to the microphone? There was a flyer, it's blue, explaining the Falmouth Gun Buyback Coalition, and we've been asked to support it. And I'll let you, is there anything you'd like to tell us about it?
Well, the Falmouth Gun Buyback Coalition was formed several months ago in, part of it was after the Parkland sadness. And because it's clear that if there are guns that are in homes that are not well taken care of, that are not tended and that are not wanted, that are sort of accidental guns to be there, that this can cause problems there. It's higher incidence of suicide, there's higher incidence of accidental shootings, and higher incidence of domestic abuse cases. So if those guns are not wanted and people do want to get them out, it's a motivational thing for them to get them out, to have one day, to have some sort of motivation. We will be giving gift cards to, mostly to Shaw's, basically for food purchases, so that people, if they were inclined to clear out the house from those guns that they got by accident, maybe somebody died and left them there, maybe there was a reason for them to have them before, maybe they used to have a gun license, and that lapsed because they were no longer interested, and those guns are a danger. So, we got together and we have been so thrilled with the response of the town, sort of every kind of aspect. Initially, it was Chamber of Commerce, it's been the Woods Hole Community Association, the Woods Hole Business Association, it's been communities of faith of all sorts. And, yes, we went to the Board of Selectmen, there's a lovely article in the newspaper that, online now, that explains, and it seems like a natural thing for us to come and ask for the support of this very important part of the community. So, we're asking for your endorsement, and we're asking for advice on how perhaps we can spread the word through the school communities to support this. Perhaps there are families who really are looking for a way to get the guns out of their homes with this current motivation. So if you have questions, we'd love to answer them.
Thank you. We've talked a lot about safety, so are there specific questions?
I do have a question. I'm just wondering about what happens with the gun.
Oh, that's a very good question. Because we were, we were very careful to consider what would happen sometimes in situations if you're, they might be sort of recycled in a sense, but we were committed to them being destroyed, so all the guns will be destroyed. Because, then we will ask people, the people who want their guns to be destroyed will be the ones that bring them, and that will be clear.
And who transports them?
Who, the owners, so, oh, these are great questions. Because typically you need to have a license to carry to have your hands on a gun to take it anywhere, but the, I'm gonna say the Attorney General, but the district attorney has given amnesty for the day for people who don't have a license to carry to bring the guns to the police department for them to be welcomed. And then they record the numbers, the serial, every gun has a serial number. That number will be recorded and it will be entered properly in the state database.
And police officers will accept the guns. It'll all be done through the police, and we're just there to hand out the grocery, the gift certificates. And the gift certificates will be given anywhere, 25, 50 or $75 depending on what kind of guns they bring in. An AR-15 might get $75, you know, so there'll be different denominations. The most would be $75.
And if people are not comfortable bringing the gun, because a lot of times they would be people who wouldn't be comfortable having the gun at home, then they can contact us or the police department for that help, checking to make sure that they're unloaded and that the lock is on, that the safety is on.
I have a handful of questions. Will there be, now I know that the Powers, sorry, Powers of B said that the folks from the church to the police station will have amnesty. How about the people at home who were left with the guns? Will they have amnesty as well to bring them to the church?
Yes, yes. And the church now was part of this five years ago in a gun buyback. The church really, it's the home to the police station. The church that was involved is-
Will there be some sort of law enforcement at the church?
There's no church involvement. There are churches who are supporting it financially and by endorsing it, but the guns, I know that some people were involved five years ago at a gun buyback where it went to the Wesley Church and then that was moved. So it goes directly to the police department where they will be-
This event is at the police department?
Correct.
Okay, and when people bring their unwanted weapons to the police department, will they be documented or will they just be anonymous?
It's anonymous. It is, it needs to be anonymous, and it is.
Any last question? John?
Well, just if we can define, what is it specifically that you're asking the school committee and the district to do? Because in our, in our role as educators-
Great.
-there's always the challenge of, are we staying in our lane? And is it something that is a school-related thing or not? With that said, of course, the logic of what you're doing is a wonderful thing and it's impactful. But with that said, what do you want from the school district?
Well, we want you to support it, and it helps to have a list of people in the town who are supporting it so that, you know, people will say, oh, this is a good thing, the schools. I mean, it's obviously safety for children, so we really feel strongly that the schools are important. There are an awful lot of businesses and the Selectmen and the Chamber of Commerce who are supporting it, so we're hoping that the schools will as well. We do need two other things. We need money, so, not that we're asking you for money, but if people understand-
Good, because we don't have any.
We understand that if people want to contribute or want to buy a gift certificate at either Shaw's or Stop &amp; Shop, that would be helpful in a way too, because we have to have about, we're trying to raise $15,000 to have enough money to pay people for the guns, to get them out of the way. And just letting people know that we're there and we are taking guns so that people will do spring cleaning hopefully and get the guns out of the houses. That's the main-
So I think it would add-
So as far as, you know, the general notion of what you're doing is great, it's why we say, why doesn't somebody do something? And you are, so thank you. But I always just like to think of, okay, now, there is a political component to it, then, what do we decide are the things that are, that we're supporting or not supporting? With that said, I would support, in general, if I was giving you the stamp and saying, yes, we're supportive of the Falmouth Gun Buyback. What the, what that entails though, is that putting a flyer and kids' backpacks to things of that name. What's the mechanical part of that? That's the thing I would-
And I think that is a good question Nancy would have to handle.
This is, well, there are a couple things. One thing is, I think that what we are understanding is that this is a public health issue, and we need to address it as a public health issue. And there have been high-profile school shootings. With that said, there have been many school shootings that have not gotten the publicity of some of these horrible, you know, multiple, multiple, multiple ones. There've been, so, so it is a school issue. So I think that that's right out there, and you folks deal with that every day. So the other thing is, we need your advice in terms of how the schools might, the question of having the announcement in the backpacks, we have, we have these posters that we'll be putting up around Crown. If that would be appropriate to let people know.
So I think there's two pieces here. One would be whether or not the school committee wants to vote in support of it, and then the second piece is then, that would then translate to your office to manage, because there are rules about the things that we can send home and the language that has to be on them and all that stuff. So that's not something we can decide here. If we support it, that piece would, sorry, but I'm throwing that your way. And that would be for you to figure out.
Yeah, and if we can help at all in crafting that, we're-
Right, to make it appropriate, yeah.
Also, it's in support of the students at the high schools who were, who expressed some concern about this and arranged a demonstration, as I understand.
Yes.
I was just wondering, because you said it was anonymous, I'm assuming you're trying to get as broad of a spectrum as you can, so this, people do not have to be Falmouth residents?
We can't require them to be Falmouth residents. We also can't afford to spread it, you know, nationwide. So we're calling it the Falmouth Gun Buyback in hopes that it will be nationwide limited so that we can support it financially. But you're right, it is anonymous and must be, and typically has been wherever they've had them. It follows the model of gun buybacks that they've had in Worcester for the last dozen years very successfully. And so we have some guidance from people who've done that, notions of like what financial level we need, what number of guns we might expect, so.
Melissa, I just have a question. Could any, could anyone, just to clarify, who had a weapon that was unwanted in their home go into the police station at any given time and turn it in anonymously? The incentive behind this is that we're giving you a prize in return, essentially?
That's it. It's motivational, it's raising awareness. As we raise the awareness, they may well be families who say, oh, look, I had my license to carry and I got this gun, but I never really learned how to use it properly. Maybe what I want to do now is get that training so that I can use it properly. Not everyone will be turning guns in, but it will hopefully start a conversation in the community so that we can-
And I bet a lot of people don't know that, so this, that they can drop it off any time. So this is just a awareness. Pardon me, you have another one? No.
It's a little incentive.
Oh, yeah, exactly, exactly.
But this also can start that relationship that the community has with the police station, understanding that it is an anonymous-
Right.
And that they can do it anytime, right?
And these are being destroyed. That's a real important point, that we felt very strongly about that, that the guns should be destroyed, not resold or repurposed for something else.
I'd like to put a motion-
Oh, I was gonna make the motion.
Go ahead, Terry. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Falmouth Gun Buyback program, which will be coordinated as far as the legal sections and stuff with Nancy's office.
Wonderful. Is there a second?
A second.
Any last discussion?
I would like to-
I just wanted to check on the language. So we're supporting, not approving.
Oh, supporting, yes.
Did I say approve?
We're so used to approving.
We're supporting it, yeah.
We're supporting it.
Are you good? Did you have something?
Yes, I would like to know exactly what supporting looks like. Is it going to be a letter home in the backpack? Is it, I just-
I think we'll be listed right here on this giant list of organizations.
Okay.
And-
I'll be looking into the piece around how the school participates.
Okay. And it sounds like if Worcester has done it, probably Worcester Public Schools knows-
They probably haven't figured it out. Yeah, that'd be great, then we can use what they already know. Any last discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? It's unanimous. Thank you so much, ladies. Thank you for all that hard work.
Thank you so much. It means a lot to have the school community behind us.
Thanks for thinking of us. Next is discussing and acting on the parking for a fee at Falmouth High School. Parking for, you know what I mean, parking fees at Falmouth High School. We had a little bit of new information in our packet about current revenue.
If you look on my briefing, Sharon did some work in connection with Mary Gans as to what the fee at Falmouth High School has looked like for the past many, many years. As you know, it's $80 per student. It does get prorated based on when a student obtains their license and begins driving to school. So I just put a couple of numbers down there for you to look at, and also, there was a question about what the revenues from the past five years looked like, so I included those as well. On the second page, the parking lot attendant, the staff assistant's salary of $31,555 has been rolled into the FY '19 operating budget, so I think it's just important to remember that piece.
John, did you want to start off?
Yes, I do. This has been something near and dear to my heart here, that I would like to suggest we lower it to $20. And I'm just choosing $20 as a, sort of an arbitrary number, but one that would give us a cushion that would be significantly lower than it's been. But it would give us a cushion if the sticker prices go up to actually manufacture those stickers. As it is now, at $20 times 236 stickers that were issued this year, that'd be $4,720. So once the individuals, the parking lot attendant's salary is rolled in, then I think $4,720 would be more than reasonable to create stickers each year. It could also be part of any kind of purchase of any kind of software program that we might have to try to, if there was any kind of program that they had for parking lot management or something, just giving you a cushion then, that we then would then keep track of that money because then if their debt ends up being, you know, if the stickers end up only costing $1,000 for the whole year or 500, and then we go year to year and that's $40,000 or something, that after 10 years, then we reassess what we're doing with those funds and then maybe even consider lowering further. But I figured just to cut to the chase that we might all agree on it and then have the individuals, who many have voiced an opinion to me, that, you know, why is that so high and that sort of thing? But on the other side of the coin, we don't charge students for buses in some communities and some districts do. So with that said, it's not unreasonable to have a differentiation between the one student that is driving, you know, for to park and that there could be some funds that you accumulate that if there was an emergency thing that you needed extra salt or something, some random thing that needed a parking lot impact, that you could, that $20 would, I think, be reasonable to lower it to $20.
Is there anybody to discuss what they feel they need, like the, is this under, Mary, is this under student activities kind of purview or?
If the money comes in, it goes back into the student accounts, it would be-
But I mean, who make, who would be, have enough information to make the decision of what's a good amount?
I don't know, I think it's arbitrary. I mean, $80 has been the same for 15 or so years. I know other districts charge much more and other districts charge less, so I don't think there's any standard fee.
But, the other thing, can we make such a monetary decision? Are we allowed to do that? Is that in our purview? That's why I'm asking, Mary.
Oh, I see your point.
It has to go to, I don't think we can set a money amount on anything, anything, right? So, somebody has to be, make, that's why we should direct it to whoever would be making that decision.
Patrick, do you know?
So, the school committee does have purview to vote on fees. The recommendation on a fee, on a specific fee should be made by the administration. Per Mary's comments, there isn't any sort of standard fee on this. A fee of $20 seems reasonable to cover sort of the incremental costs of handling stickers or other costs that might be directly attributable to managing parking at the school. So it sounds reasonable.
So, the revenues from the past five years, did that money go directly into the salary?
Yeah, we would hit the salary line and we compensate for the salary line in the pack.
So all of this money went into the salary? There wasn't anything put aside for maintenance?
No, I think some of the, it might get hit for the sticker fees from time to time, but it was really, it was used to supplement the salary going back 20 years ago when $15,000 was probably closely matched the salary.
So this is like having an extra $4,000 to maintain-
It could be.
Since we're rolling in to the budget.
It could be.
So it's not like we're losing out on money to maintain the parking lot?
No, we'll be fine, from a financial perspective, we will be fine because we rolled the position into the local budget this year.
Well, it'll still be less money though. It'll be less money coming in.
Correct, correct.
Just because we absorbed that cost in our budget, that would have been money we would have been spending on other things. It's not like, yeah.
Yeah, that's correct.
You know what I mean?
Right, but we, yes, but we were, we were using this for a salary. I know we don't have to use that for a salary.
Correct. We shouldn't. Yeah. Nancy?
Does anything know how many parking spaces we have available for students?
Ample.
Yeah, I don't know the exact number, but it's more than enough.
Because, you know, by cutting it significantly, the numbers could go up.
To the point that-
Oh, I see what you're saying. So maybe some students couldn't afford the $80 or $60 or didn't want to pay it, sure, but now that it potentially- or sixty dollars, or didn't want to pay it, sure, but now that it potentially could be lowered, they would say, "I can swing that," I see what you're saying.
Well, how many drivers do we have?
Yeah, it's when, so when they turn sixteen, sixteen and a half, and they're typically part of our junior class, and then our senior class, if they have their license, and they have a car, and they drive to school. What were the ticket sales this year, two-thirty-six, something like that?
Would the seniors be given priority?
No, there, there's no need to give anybody priority, because there's plenty of spaces. And we do waive fees for hardship discreetly, so if students know that if they can't afford, they can always come and request a waiver, a scholarship, so it's fair.
So, I guess I'm wondering, John, I know that somebody had complained to you that they thought it was...
That number of people, that was...
And to myself, to be clear, I've also been approached. Because I've not heard one peep about this, and so I'm inclined, you know, you always say, "If it's not broken," and so that's sort of where I'm at with this, I'm not sure...
Typically, you do a picture, though, even if it's not broken.
That's true. I just, I've not heard, I've not heard anything about it, even with it on the agenda, not a peep. So, I'm just not sure what the reasoning behind not having a...
It's unfair, that's for sure.
Why is it not fair, though?
Well, it's eighty dollars, it's not reasonable. Now that we're absorbing, A, that gentleman's salary shouldn't have been in there, in the first place, and B, back when the salary was in there, it was when we didn't have a police officer sitting there, basically being a redundant service to what he's providing. And C, I would actually like to see him out there in the afternoon, too, when the kids are leaving, rather than having everybody kind of go off, so then that would be another value add, too. But separate of that, if you're just paying for the stickers, how much, how much do you want to squeeze out of these kids, Kelly?
But we're already paying millions of dollars to get them to school. It's just, it's, it's a luxury, and it's a, it's a privilege to be able to not use the transportation we're already giving for free.
Let me flip it on you, where do you come up with eighty, then? Where do you base the eighty on?
Well, it was ba, it's been the same for fifteen years.
So, just because now we've absorbed that salary, so you're just gonna keep, like Scrooge McDuck, gathering the money from these kids?
Yeah.
Terri?
I totally disagree with not having a fee, it's a luxury for kids, and we, we've already lost money by losing half the salary. I mean, do, people have to, police, and I do see the people in the afternoon out there, helping direct the traffic out. I mean, they walk around and make sure the kids' cars don't get broken into, and things like that during the day, so, I mean, it's not as if we're charging the kids for nothing. There's very few places in the world where you can just go park for free. I mean, there's, you've gotta fix potholes, you gotta keep the lines painted, I mean, there's a lot of maintenance required, and as Kelly said, we already provide transportation for kids, so this is a luxury for them. I probably just made two-hundred-and-thirty-six enemies, but, and we do always, everything we ever do for kids, if it can't be afforded, whether it's breakfast, or helping them with these tickets, or prom tickets, everything, we always take care of people who are really in need, we're very good at that. So, I disagree, I think we should raise the fee, actually, to even a hundred. No, don't quote me on that, I mean, but, I mean, I think we should definitely leave it actually eighty dollars.
Yeah. One second.
Mary, can I just ask you a question? If, if this money, this, let's just say, the sixteen thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, if that were to go directly into student activities account, would students directly benefit from that money?
Yes, so every class...
Can you describe some ways in which that would happen? That's what I'm concerned about.
Yeah, so that money would actually provide a, a foundation and a buffer for each class, if it was divided equally, or however we want to decide how to divide it, for activities that they put on. Every class has activities, whether it's a prom, a dance, and they have to fundraise, they have to raise this money, you know, themselves, and they work hard at it. We just had a, the sophomore class did a car wash a couple of weekends ago, and raised seventeen hundred dollars, because they said, "Come get your car washed for free, we'll take donations," so people were extremely generous. But if it was the eighty dollars, and the kids paid the eighty dollars, and it is prorated, so if you get your license halfway through the year, you pay forty dollars. If the money went back directly into the classes, the students would absolutely directly benefit from it, and I know they'd appreciate it. And I will say, there are some schools that literally charge two hundred dollars to, for students to park.
I pay two hundred dollars, that was like two hundred years ago.
Yeah, there's some that charge one-fifty, one-hundred, twenty-five, fifty, I mean, the fees are all over the place, and I think it's just historical, whatever the school has decided to charge, and the money that, how they use it, and what it comes in for, and what it subsidizes.
Claire? I'm just wondering if you have some examples of like, how, so sixteen thousand dollars is a lot of money, so, since the student activity funds have never had this kind of money, because this has always gone to the salary, what would that enable students to do?
So, for example, right now, the senior class wants to have a field day, they want to hire people to have a cookout, they want to have bouncy houses, they want to have entertainment, even for the senior banquet, they're trying to cut costs, "Well, can we just have our own music and speakers, so we don't have to pay for a DJ?" Money is always pretty tight for the classes, so any, everything, we have to pay for police details, for games and dances, and, and we should pay for police details, but there's money that, you know, is associated with pretty much every single event that the students put on.
So, these fees, so though the students are paying these fees, they're actually going directly back to the students to use the money?
Well, they would be, they have been, but if they were, it would be a huge...
So, it would be them kind of front-loading some money?
Yes.
So, they'd be able to take advantage of?
Exactly.
Huh. Melissa. So, I, I've got to say that I'm, I'm very torn on this, because that's very appealing to me, that students put in the money to then benefit themselves and their classes, but at the same time, hearing that people have heard from the public that this is an issue, I, you know, I, I think that's, Warren's definitely looking at this, I just, you know, in thinking that students are putting money towards their own activities, that's a pretty win-win situation, so.
Melissa?
I think that some of the conversation that I was approached with, was that they were not okay with these funds going to support a salary, and they were told that it was being to support the parking lot security in some way, in addition to the salary of the employee. I, I wonder perhaps if, knowing that this money would essentially be turned back over to the students, if that shines a different light on things? Although, I still think that eighty dollars is steep for any high school kid, but, you know.
If it's going directly...
But if it's going directly towards, I don't, now I'm torn, like you, I, because I truly feel like how it was previously done, maybe wasn't the best way, but we've shown some light on it, and we've absorbed this position into the budget, but now it potentially could help them in the long run, and money has always been trouble for the classes, and it is hard to, you know, when you're a senior, and you want to do the best you can do for your class, because it's the last year, you all are going to be together, it's, it sort of actually looks kind of nice, when you put it like that.
And we just get those things to donate to the prom?
Yeah.
You know?
Right, and we wouldn't actually have to do that, they could... No, we would still do that, don't worry. We would still donate to that. There'd be more funds for that. Maybe they could do more.
Well, by way of comparison, I know eighty dollars does sound like a lot, and it is a lot, but like junior prom is Saturday, the tickets for junior prom are fifty dollars a piece, and that's in order to enable them to have the food that they want, to have the entertainment that they want, to have the decorations that they want, we pay for police details, we pay for chaperones, so...
So, it could be that those tickets go down to twenty-five, or...
Those tickets would have a reduced price, right.
Which might actually mean that we'll go.
Yeah.
John?
Just a couple of points, I've actually been at the, everywhere the kids are driving out to last, three times in the last two weeks, and that was, that's what I observed there, as far as the activity, whether someone was directing or not. The DPW fixes the parking lot, so that's a whole separate budget item as well, so that's not an issue. Yes, it was also told that security cameras and stuff was part of what that was going to, and once that was paid, that's a fixed cost, it's already done. The kids who are, that are paying this, may not be participating in those specific events that some money might go towards. So, if some kid's driving in, it's not like, "Oh, here's your thing, what if they don't attend that?" I think any kind of an individual item that would need extra funds, it's not unreasonable, and like Mary says, the kids are very resourceful in doing the different fundraising for whatever that particular thing is. So, if a kid is not, is he participating in A, and, and that A is what those funds are going towards, and he's driving, or she's driving, they might say, "Oh, that's great." But if he, he or she participates in B, and those funds didn't go to that, it didn't help them. And in addition to the other folks, I'm a parent of a student that already paid the eighty dollars, and I don't think it's a reasonable amount of money. Have seen both sides to it, where it goes to, as a school committee member, and as a parent, that the funds are going to, I, I don't think it's, I think twenty dollars is not unreasonable. If I'm not mistaken, mash pay is like twenty dollars or something, too, if I'm not mistaken, there's one end of the spectrum, and there's other, like you did, you were fair, Mary, you did say it was twenty-five, fifty, maybe a hundred fifty or two hundred, so I'm not, I take your word for it, but I, I just think for our Falmouth students, twenty dollars is reasonable, we have our finance director that says, "That seems like a reasonable fee," and not to put you on the...
To cover the cost.
To cover the cost. To me, you cover the cost if it's a parking, parking issue, I mean, then we could just randomly, sort of, I don't want to use a word that I was going to use, but, charge, you know, just to, to put a premium to kids on having activity, then we could just say, "All right, if you're gonna wear a hat today, you know, then you're gonna charge X amount." You know, I know we do that for a fun event sometimes, as a fundraiser, but you could just pick an arbitrary thing, of like, let's, this is gonna, we're gonna charge a fee for X, because if you're able to cover the costs, then it is just an arbitrary fee that you're saying we're gonna charge to someone above that cost. And then you're looking at, over the course of ten years, you know, that's like forty thousand, you know, just with that, it's, you know, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, if you think ten years, times seventeen thousand dollars, something, you know, two hundred, you know, whatever, forty thousand dollars over.
Who purchases the stickers on a yearly basis?
The student activities does, but they don't, actually, they're not purchased on a yearly basis, we purchase them in bulk, and we may not have to purchase them for a couple of years.
Okay, so, the bulk, you got a thousand?
I, yeah, I...
And what was the cost of that?
I don't know.
I think that would be interesting to know, what are the cost of stickers? I don't think stickers would be a lot of money. I do like the fact that if a student pays something, that those fees go back to the students, I think that's really important, and that can be utilized in a variety of ways. If you did it at twenty, you mentioned four thousand dollars, if you did it at forty or fifty, you'd double that, and then each class would make two grand plus, and then after freshman year, they get to their senior year, they'd have a grand. You could do it something like that. But I like the fact that if kids are paying to park, that money goes right directly back to them, in some utilization, so.
So, I think there's two questions, though, that, one is whether or not we want to just cover our cost, I think that, that's one of the questions, and, you know, because we know that we could do it for less, we could charge less and cover our costs, but that's, to me, the crux of the whole discussion, is whether or not we want to just cover our costs for something that, like, for me, I feel like is a privilege, because we're already providing transportation. I think, I, I just want to make sure that... Anne?
You know, I had a bunch of questions coming into this, and some of them have been answered. One of the key ones is that I wanted to make sure that students who weren't able to afford that, were going to be covered, like we do for so many other options, and that sounds like that's true, so that makes me feel very comfortable with that. I, I agree, I do think that this is a privilege, particularly because we provide busing for every student who needs it. You know, I was running the numbers on that, and it's over five hundred dollars a student that we're spending for busing, so we're already incurring those costs, whether they take the bus or not. I am also concerned about, I, I think if you look at the information out there, encouraging more novice drivers in, in one location at any one time, isn't always the best thing. You know, there's, we talk a lot about all sorts of things, and having that fully developed prefrontal cortex, and the, the one place that really gets that research is the rental car industry, because they will not rent cars to people under the age of twenty-five, because they know there's other issues. So, I don't want us to be providing busing for everyone, and also encouraging as many novice drivers as want to, to be coming into our parking lots on every day, every given day, for a whole variety of reasons. So, as long as we've figured out where this money is going, we've dealt with the issue of making sure that it's not going to a salary, that we make sure that the students who can't afford that are covered, I'm happy to, you know, have a, a fee, and I don't think eighty dollars is unreasonable for a privilege of doing that, so.
Did you have something?
Yeah, I just, I, I agree with what you're saying, but I also think, you know, to think back to when you got your license, and you had a job, and you worked for your money, and you bought your car, like, that's a big deal, and I think, I remember that, you know, you're like, "Oh, my gosh, I could drive to school," like, that's a really huge deal for our juniors and seniors, and I think regardless of the price, they're gonna find it some way. I do think eighty is a little high, and I worry about how we're gonna decide where that money does go. Who's gonna be the one to say, "You know what, this money's gonna go to the junior class, or this one's gonna be used for, for this activity," how, who's gonna be the one to decide that? That's another question, I don't know.
I think that would be the principal's opinion.
You would decide that, and, okay.
I mean, and honestly, in thinking about it, I think the eighty dollars, I'm just guessing, because I wasn't there, obviously, fifteen, twenty years ago, but we prorate it per quarter, and it's pretty easy, twenty, forty, sixty, eighty. I'm just wondering if that's where the eighty even came up with, because we were on a quarter system at the school.
Claire? I'm just wondering about the process for, if, if you're in financial hardship, and you do need help paying for this fee, what is that process like for students?
We, when we have homeroom meetings or meetings with students, we talk, we always say, "If you have any, you know, issue with paying for anything, including a parking fee, please come and see us discreetly." So, typically, if a student gets their license, and they're excited about it, they'll come to me, they'll go to a guidance counselor, they'll go to an assistant principal, they'll go right to student activities and say, "I really want a sticker, but, you know, I really can't afford it." That's fine, we, we usually know our students pretty well, we do not have students who say that, who, you know, can't afford it, and, yeah, we definitely have students every year who do that.
So, is documentation required, or?
I don't ask for documentation, we pretty much already know the demographics of the students.
Terri?
I was a student advisor for fourteen years, different classes, and when you talk about where does the money go, how do you divvy it up, you don't ever, you want to encourage in students, from my perspective, is that things are together as a class, our class has this money, let's like work and figure out how to do with it. You don't try to give, you know, you want the spirit of a class incorporated into it, so Nancy, or, sorry, Mary had mentioned, whatever's there, you divide it equally, and then the class can do it for me. You don't worry about, "I did this, or I did that," you're, part of being the high school experience is you're a member of a class, so, you know, okay.
All right, any last... There was another point, sorry. Last thoughts, John?
I just have two final...
John and Melissa, and then we'll, we'll close it up and move on.
One, with relation to what Andrew was saying, I think we did establish, and I think we reaffirmed it with the question of Mary there, we've established that there's not gonna be a massive influx of kids, because the ones that are gonna have it, have it, and there's a component that they're able to get. So, that extra component of number of kids is not an issue. And the other thing is that a lot of kids have to work, so it's not just, "Let's take the bus," they have to work to support themselves, and maybe their families, too, so they need to drive, so it's not necessarily a luxury, it's something that the way they might feed their families, and that's all I have to say.
So, that's pretty much what I was gonna say, that, yes, it is very much a luxury, and it is very much a big deal, because I too, Megan, remember not so long ago, getting my license, and having the privilege of taking the car to school. But I also think about, you know, leaving school and going to work, thinking about students that go and do their work share, or their internship program, that we obviously are not providing busing for, and yes, I know that that isn't always required, but encouraged with some programs. So, I just, I just want to be mindful of those students as well. I appreciate, Mary, that you do offer scholarships for students discreetly, because I think... I appreciate, Mary, that you do offer scholarships for students discreetly because I think discretion is absolutely a must. It's awkward enough to be a high school kid and then to go in and have to ask for money is really hard when you just want to be a normal kid. So I appreciate that. And again, I wonder perhaps if with the new light of the funds being divided up to the classes or a cushion for their class accounts could possibly shine a new light with some of the folks that contacted me personally.
All right, we don't have a motion, so I don't know if anybody.
I have a motion that we lower to $20 for parking.
Okay, so there's a motion to lower the fee to $20. Is there a second?
A second.
Any last discussion? All in favor of reducing the fee to $20 a year?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
No.
So it's two in favor. Any abstentions? Three in favor?
It was three in favor.
Oh, three, I'm sorry. I thought you were saying voices. Sorry. Three in favor. Any opposed?
Opposed.
One, two, three, four. Five opposed. Any abstentions? Walter, did you vote? Did you abstain?
I abstained.
Okay, abstain. So it does not pass. Next on the list. Act on the Carousel of, oh, and now you had to sit through that whole thing, I'm sorry. Act on the, review and act on the Carousel of Light license.
So in your packet, you will see a draft of the 2018 license for Carousel of Light. And also attached, you'll see the Certificate of Liability Insurance. And I want to point out two quick things. Page one, under E, you'll see that the dates are emboldened and I just want to make sure that we look at that. We had some confusion around that last year and I'd like to avoid that this year. And then on the Certificate of Liability Insurance, you'll see that it goes from 6/9/2017 to 6/9/2018. So the Carousel of Light, Troy, the president, will give us another Certificate of Liability Insurance that will then bring us from 6/9/2018 through the next year. That's just a piece we can't, we can't miss, so.
So anything will be pending, not updated.
Right. And I know that Rich Sherman has already reached out to make sure that that is in process and I'm not worried that that won't go through or anything. I'm sure we'll get that.
Can I just ask a quick question before we move on? So, so did we receive a donation last year?
It, we just received it recently.
Yep. It was deposited and.
Do we have how much it was?
It's $2,000 and it's available for Mullen Hall. I gave her a call.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that goes directly to Mullen Hall?
Yeah, that was a discussion that was the school committee made last year, that it should become available for Mullen Hall.
And there is some work that needs to be done when the carousel moves out, whether it's sort of repairing around the track, which they've done a really nice job on. And so it is earmarked for Mullen Hall.
Are we questioning things?
We don't have, we don't have a motion. We can either discuss and have them answer questions or we can make a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve it.
Yeah. Is there a second?
A second?
Okay. Now, let's discuss. John, how about it?
I had a question. So the funds, it's not really a donation, it's a basically like an operating fee to use the facilities at Mullen Hall, right?
No, I think it's a donation. Because the fee for use is a dollar.
Okay, no, but I mean, we get, we're getting.
We get a certain percentage of that fee.
Is that what it takes until yesterday to get the fees that you accumulated up to Labor Day last year?
First of all, I'll answer the question.
Please, yes, I'm at it.
But Mary, just say hello and my name is Troy Clarkson, I'm the president of Carousel of Light. With me is board member Jim Bowen. Jim and I have actually been on the board in both iterations of this local nonprofit dating back more than 20 years. It's our pleasure to be here to talk to you. We're very, very grateful for our partnership with the schools. To answer the specific question from John, all the board members are volunteers. We obviously work for the betterment of the community and without compensation. And it was the first time that I had an opportunity to get the money from our treasurer and to visit Patrick to hand it to him, so.
Fair enough.
I would like to address the specific agreement, if that's possible.
Sure.
I would like to thank Patrick. On April 26th, I had the opportunity to meet with him and that's when we provided the check. We actually have a nice photograph ready to go on social media tonight after hopefully a positive vote. We, at that meeting, we did discuss the draft license and then I had the opportunity to follow up after consulting with the vice president of the board, Don Terry, who is in Koala Lumpur this evening and can't be with us, who really is the boots on the ground and handles the day-to-day operations on behalf of the board in the summertime with support from folks like Jim and Rich and others. And so we talked about dates. The agreement that's before you is a bit of a departure from our agreements in the past, so I just wanted to talk about that if possible and appeal to you perhaps to return to something that looks closer to what we've done before. What we had suggested or requested was actually being able to operate starting Memorial Day weekend, which would actually require us to set up next week and then operate on weekends only. And I think, as the superintendent mentioned, that's where the communication, the confusion came in last year where, so in order to eliminate that, what we had hoped was to have weekends only through September 16th and then closing down then. So that's a departure from the dates that are in this draft agreement. Obviously, the setup at the earlier date is far more important to us. And so we would ask just that perhaps, if possible, we alter those dates in the agreement slightly. I did, one of the also agreements, requirements in the agreement that Patrick and I discussed and we certainly agreed to was to provide a current 990 form, which of course is the tax form for a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. I've just provided the most recent form to Patrick. It is 2016, we're on our extension for 2017. I can tell you anecdotally that the numbers for that will look very similar. We raise and spend about $50,000 a year, give or take. All of the board members serve without compensation. We do pay our summer staff that work there. So we are grateful, again, we think that the carousel, which was, as you know, for those who are watching, who may not know, was carved by hand by a local artist, Glenn Schinkel. And we've been able to fulfill our goal to keep it here in Falmouth with your support and help. We do have a subcommittee that includes two members of the Board of Selectmen, two members of the Board of Directors and Michael Kasperian from the Chamber of Commerce. And we are working diligently to try to find a permanent location and will continue to do that in the hopes that we can eventually construct a building that will house the carousel in perpetuity and relieve us of the burden of having to take it up and put it down every year and obviously taking up the space on the school grounds and the wear and tear on the mechanism.
We have quite a bit of repairs to do after the last move.
When you met with Patrick, there was no mention of dates for earlier in May or later in September because when Rick Sherman came in to ask, we absolutely asked Patrick if somehow I had misunderstood these dates.
So just for clarity, there was a request, but there was no promise that.
Okay, that wasn't what I understood when Sharon asked you, that there was not a conversation about May 15th, setting up the Carousel of Light. So my concern is only in that it was, started to be set up before the agreement last year and it was taken down when, after the agreement had ended last year. So those were my concerns for the district. I'm not necessarily opposed, but again, if we're going to agree to dates and they're not followed, that is a huge issue for the public schools. And so I am very cautious. The other thing I'm cautious about is interrupting school time too much. So those are, those are my concerns. I think for the most part, we have had a really good relationship and I think when I, when I call the carousel, they are responsive. I just think we need to, if we're going to agree on something, we have to agree on it and we have to stick to it.
I, I'm sorry. Go right ahead, Mary. We agree to that and apologize for the miscommunication last year. That was our fault. We own that and it was actually, we just made an honest mistake and we're going off an older agreement, I think, and had the dates mixed up, which is why after my meeting with Patrick and our discussion, we put our specific requested dates in writing and in an email. That's what I was just reading from and so that.
And did you send that email to me or just to Patrick?
No, not, I did not send it to you, just to Patrick.
Can you just tell us what the dates are? Because we don't have that, that you were asking for, just so we know.
It was to set up on the weekend of the 12th. Operations from May 26th to the end of June, weekends only. I'm happy to hand this, Madam Chairman, the email to you. Daily through Labor Day, September 3rd and the two weekends thereafter, closing September 16th.
Okay, thank you.
One minute.
No, that's okay. Everybody else wants it, too, so I just, I think we're all right. Thanks.
Leah. Okay, so just to clarify, that there was an email, Patrick got it, but Nancy, you didn't, you didn't know about the.
I have not seen it. No, I have not seen the email.
And I'm wondering if, Nancy, I could put you on the spot about if it, how it impacts Mullen Hall when school's going on. So if we were to extend these dates, like, right now, it's more condensed than it has been in the past, does it, does it make a difference over in the school?
So May 12th sounds surprising.
Yeah, right, because that's in a couple days, right?
It's always been a good experience having the carousel there. Thinking about the many audiences, if you will, you know, the ripples. The partnership is very important. It's always been solid. But I have to think about safety and insurance and liability, those type of things, too. That's my two cents.
So does it seem having it a little bit tighter like this makes it a little bit easier with those other pieces of liability and safety?
I would look for the timelines to have the wraparound safety issues with them. So it, May 12th and there was coverage and all the documents were all lined up?
Yeah.
We could do that.
Nancy, you can do anything. We know that. Andrea.
I guess I'm also wondering that the agreement that we're looking at here says the May 26th setup, starting operation the following weekend. But then, the new dates we're just hearing shows a two-week setup to be operational.
Yes, the reason for that is once we set up, in the way it's traditionally been, it usually sets up on a weekend. We hire a pretty large crew to do that. And then, once it's set up, we then have to wait for an inspector from the Commonwealth to come and inspect it to certify that it's set up properly and that it's safe. And so that's why there's typically a fairly large gap between the setup and the beginning of operations, so that we make sure it's running properly. We actually have our own inspector who we pay mechanic, is actually such thing as a certified carousel mechanic.
So if we went with what is currently listed as the dates under E, wouldn't it be potential that you wouldn't even be operational on June 2nd?
We would, we would very likely not be. That is correct.
Because, yeah, I was trying to figure out how to get, there's that weekend of the 19th that.
Just a couple days, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So essentially, the two weeks from the 12th and the 19th to be operational on the 26th is buying you some time because we are now at the mercy of the inspector of the Commonwealth. Correct? And just to clarify, where is the carousel held in the off-season?
That varies right now. Actually, the horses and the mechanism are in two different places, so we typically get donations or support from landscapers or tree workers and to house both the mechanism and the horses.
Okay. And is Memorial Day weekend a big moneymaker for the carousel?
It typically is, yes.
Do you think so?
Yeah, thank you.
And we, you know, we're not a big moneymaker, right? The margins are pretty tight. And so we're able to make the donation to the schools and a couple years ago, we were able to make a donation to the schools and the Falmouth Education Foundation. But with a compressed schedule that would impact our ability to pay our bills, essentially.
Right.
So I may have missed this, but what was your setup time last year?
The actual, the actual date?
Was it before the Memorial Day?
I'd have to check the calendar, but yes, it was. It was well before, yeah.
And was it two weeks last time?
I don't believe it was May 12th. I'd have to go back and look.
But it went up. I haven't even looked at the contract.
It went, it started to be, yes.
Does that, John?
Question, so the, you raised the $50,000. I know you have other activities, that you do the movie night and everything, which, of the $50,000, how much would you say is actual rides at a dollar per ride?
We didn't do the movie nights this year.
Oh, you didn't do the movie?
No. So the $50,000, it's $3 a ride, $2 a ride if you buy a bulk of 10. So all of the revenue was from admission.
Okay. Because have you figured out how many rides there is, though?
Yeah, we average, we keep track. Don Terry is a.
So some of them might be.
It's about 30,000 rides.
Eric was going to say 30, too.
So now, the district, the agreement is 10 cents a ride, wouldn't that be $3,000 then instead of the $2,000 we got?
We didn't agree for 10 cents a ride. It was just a donation we were making.
Okay, I just, because part of the reason I was asking was I crunched the numbers and looked at it and then just.
No, we didn't say 10 cents a ride, it was just a general agreement that $2,000.
The proposed one for now does, does say that, yeah.
It does?
Yeah.
The other agreement did not exist at 10 cents a ride, am I mistaken?
I thought it did.
I thought it did as well.
It's always, I think that was the agreement.
I analyzed the agreement, it's 10 cents a ride. One of my questions that I had was if you have other revenue generating, because what I was going to propose, the reason I bring this up, A, first off, let me say I respect you guys, I like the partnership, it's a neat thing to have in the town, it's really good. The fact it was built in Falmouth and initially, Troy, when you were presenting, when I was on the chamber board, I thought it was a great idea to have it in Falmouth and keep it there. But what I was going to do was to suggest that the district, because theoretically, you know, it could double or triple or the price and then the district would still just have the 10 cents a ride, so I was kind of crunching the numbers there. And then what I was going to suggest was, you know, for example, if you raised it 0 to 24, 0 to 24 cents, there'd be no increase to the percentage of the district. But then for 25 cents and then for every 25 cent increment, to add a penny a ride to the district, which I thought wouldn't have been unfair. So now, I'm confused then if there's a confusion, but I agree with you, as if it's 10 cents, then where's that $1,000?
I'll be brutally honest with you, as I always am. The treasurer hands me a check and says, this is our donation for the carousel. I deliver the check to Patrick. I didn't conduct an analysis to see if the check matched the amount of rides. We have volunteers that handle that stuff. I trust them. I can assure you that, that there's no, like, extra money hanging around here.
I'm not accusing that.
If the check was for 2,000, I'm going to guess that this year we were closer to 20,000 rides than 30,000, but I assure you and have my solemn word that we will be meticulous this year in tracking what our ridership is and making a donation appropriately.
Can I ask a question? I'm just, I'm just thinking about all of you guys volunteering, all of your time doing this. And I'm wondering if in the future, maybe having the contract just not be per ride because that is just, that's too much work and no one's getting paid to do that. So if it was just $2,000 or 2,500 or something, that, I just feel like that would just take away that piece. Because right now, we have a contract that's stating that that's what it has to be and so it means we could go back and look at all of these.
Right.
That's just so much work.
We're happy to do that.
I think it's great that you're making a donation.
Yeah.
I mean, with the volunteerism and the time and effort you put into that, to make a donation to the school district, I think is excellent. Whether it's 10 cents or what I.
Yeah, because I'm actually concerned about, you know, if we just got the donation. Yeah, because I'm actually concerned about, you know, if we just got the donation in the last month or so, and now the contract is even more specific, which I think is a good thing, but it says September 15th. So, I, I'm worried about you guys having to do, figure out all these numbers for how many rides you had, and get the check cut, and get it to us, by a date that's in our contract now, um, so that, you know, it gets done, um, you know, whether or not you can actually do that.
Do we know how much was donated to us the year before?
I, I can answer that.
Okay.
Leah, I was the president initially during the, when, when we met five years ago with Bonnie Gifford.
Yeah.
When she was the superintendent. And, uh, and I could, I, I looked at those contracts and said, I don't remember ever seeing 10 cents. Back in the day, it was like, we were donating some money to you, because we don't know how much we're going to make, you know? And at the end of the year, we, if we looked at it at Dallas now, it's probably, well, enough to pay for the setup, a couple thousand dollars, maybe 1,500 dollars. But no, it was always a donation. And when we sort of, I think the first one was 1,500 dollars, I think we went up to 2,000 after that. Um, I don't have the old contracts, but I, I was surprised to see the 10 cents, because it was always...
And it's also, it's not a donation here, it's a fee, which is a, a different piece, too.
Do you remember Nancy?
I, I can certainly say that we're comfortable with a flat fee. And, and that way, it's actually easier for us to, uh, to make a donation more swiftly right after the, the season is over.
So we'd rather have it at the start of the year, so maybe that, that's, that works better, Nancy?
Yes, and, uh, however, I'm, I'm fairly sure that this has been in the contract, because we, the language we have carried over, we've added a few things, we've tweaked it a little bit, but the, the bones of this contract has been the same for the, the years that I've signed it.
Do you remember that?
But I'm not sure we ever really paid attention, quite frankly, to the 10 cents a mile, uh, 10 cents a mile.
Yes, I think that's...
10 cents a ride.
I think I actually drafted the original.
Melissa, did you have something?
Just really a matter of housekeeping. I think that the date should be changed, because the weekend of the 15th, Saturday is the 15th. So I assume that we want to have it open and running until Sunday, the 16th as well. Unless that's your goal, to shut it down halfway through the final weekend.
This is to pay us.
Yeah, that's...
Right. It will only run, it will only be going into...
Right, but we, if they're going...
September the 1st is the last day.
Yeah, or if, if you look at B, it says September 3rd is the last time.
Okay.
And then 15th would be the date.
Right, but the new proposed date said the weekend's through September 16th, correct?
Right.
Yes.
So, if you agree to that, you would have to amend the other date.
Okay, that's where I'm at.
But at this point, I, I haven't heard that, that we're changing. But if you do, then we would have to amend the dates.
Okay, very good, just keeping it all square.
Um, Terri.
Oh, I was going to make a motion.
Um, I have something, I haven't said anything. Well, I said something, but I have something else before you make a motion, if that's okay.
We want to be talking about it. We already made a motion, and... But I wanted to amend it. Yeah. Is that amended? Yeah.
Can I say my piece first? Can you do mine, real quick?
No, I don't mind.
Please. So, um, I do think we're going to have to at least revisit the dates to fix for the operation, for the setup time that is required and the breakdown time, because if it's operating until the 1st, it's not going to be down in two days, I would presume. How, does it come down as fast as it goes up? Or slowly as it goes up, whichever?
I think it's faster.
It takes, it does, but it does take a couple of days, I think, to go up and down.
A couple of days.
And the challenge, frankly, is, is getting the, the, the help and the crews to do that.
Because I would imagine you want to, you want to operate through Labor Day, which is the 3rd.
Yes.
Sure.
Would it, would it be helpful if I just submitted into the record the, the, the email that I sent that clarifies our, our desired dates anyway?
Sure, send it down. I, I can't share it with everybody, because Millie wants, so it's just, I, I don't like to, I want to bring it over again.
We need a document camera over here.
Oh, Lord. More things to buy. Okay, Terri, what were you going to say?
I'd like to, um, amend the, the motion to say that we give them the two weeks leeway that they need on either end, and that we accept a flat donation rather than 10 cents per ride. Otherwise, the document will be worked out with Patrick, correct?
Through the superintendent.
Through the superintendent.
Would you like to add the amount of the flat donation?
You'll make the changes on it.
I can, yeah.
Would you like to add the amount of the flat donation?
No, I don't think we need an amount, because I think they're generous, they're generous based upon what they earn, it looks like to me. If it rains all summer, you know, they may have a hard time meeting that.
Can you clarify what you mean by the, the, the date change? What the new dates would be? Would it be in agreement with the proposal that they sent? So to...
To be honest with you, the dates have been, are swimming around in their head. I think that's, that particular date can be ironed out with Patrick and Nancy, but give them two weeks leeway to get going and set...
Two weeks to set up and a week to break down?
Correct.
And the operational dates would be at Nancy's discretion?
Correct. I, I think we need dates, though, for, because if we're going to be voting on this...
Yeah, that would be, like you said, Saturday, wouldn't it?
It's this weekend, they're going to set up.
Yeah, I think we would have to, you're probably right.
Yeah, two weeks before.
Uh, so, so the other issue that I'm worried about is that we need to adhere to whatever the dates are, because...
Wait a second, there was a motion, right? An amendment?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there's no, sorry. Is there a second to that?
Okay.
Well, Patrick and Nancy are going to set the date, and then they're going to adhere to it. All I'm saying is, do we need to know the date to make...
I think we do. If we're going to approve this contract, we would have to know the dates.
I think we need to know the starting date, obviously, because that would be this weekend.
Right.
Well, then, the, this Saturday? Okay, so I'd like to put the date as this Saturday to set up, and then whatever this week is, the weekend after...
Do you want my, I wrote them down, Terri, do you want to make it official?
So, so this says set up the week of May 14th. Are we talking this weekend, or are we talking the week of May 14th, which would be next?
There was a follow-up, if you go down further in the page, it clarified that, because I didn't realize that they, they had desired to set up on the 12th.
I wish, I wish this had been sent to me, so I could have looked at it before tonight. And I, I would have been better prepared in terms of, of amending dates.
Yeah, it's sort of like legal ease on the fly.
Yeah.
I have a comment that we're still in discussion.
Sure, yeah.
I think just from, I'd like to support our superintendent, that she doesn't feel comfortable with it, I think we should table this.
The problem is, is that we don't meet again for two weeks, and that's so close to everything.
And you're not going to be able to set up, if we meet again on the 22nd, that's not going to give them any time to set up before Memorial Day, other than during the school day, and we've all expressed our concern with interrupting the school day.
Yeah, but, I mean, Johnny, I, I hear that, and, and, you know, I'm inclined to say the same thing. I just wish we had more time. And I, and really, for me, I was the one that was getting the call that it was up without a contract last year and up after the contract was over at the end of the year. So for me, I'm really worried about the dates, because, you know, this is what protects us. And if it's up beforehand or after this contract, the district is not protected.
It's a problem.
Madam Chairman?
Yeah.
I, I don't mean to put anyone on the spot, but I had a reasonable expectation, when I sent an email to the district two weeks ago, that that information would flow to the superintendent's office. I apologize if I didn't see, see the superintendent on the email, but I, but if, if the question is the reliability of the information from us, we, uh, I was asked to provide it and, and provided it immediately thereafter, understanding that there needed to be clarity about the dates. And, and so, I apologize for any mix-up, but I think, you know, that we did what we were asked. And, and so I would just appeal to your sense of charity and community and, and not let that sort of trip up our, our deliberations tonight.
Yeah. Please.
Um, what is the possibility of it, giving Nancy a little time with this, and us having just meeting to approve this contract closer, not, not in two weeks, but next week?
Well, we'll have a new committee as of Tuesday, so I would say not great.
Well, they're, they're asking for this Sunday, correct?
Right.
So that, it, that's the 12th.
Saturday, yeah.
Saturday.
I actually, I, I don't feel comfortable with this Sunday, though, just with Mullen Hall not having the heads up about that.
Can I have a question on that?
Andrea was first, and then you, Melissa.
Um, I'm wondering, is there a way, based on the time crunch we're in, to approve this in a manner that we also allow Nancy to make the operational decision of the dates? So we can approve it in, you know, with that contingency, that dates get set based on whatever extra information you need to communicate with, you know, principals and other, um, central...
Yeah, that's what Terri's motion was.
That was my, that was my motion. That's what I moved, that we approve it, but with Nancy and Patrick's input into the technicalities.
If everyone is all right with that, we can...
I have another question. What ex, I, I don't mean to sound disrespectful in any sort of way, but what, how does it impact the school if it were to be started this weekend? If we're, if the...
The setup, right.
Pardon?
The setup, right.
Correct. Is there a preparation, Nancy, that has to be done at school? Sorry, I can't see you. Is there a preparation that has to be done at school that would hinder this? Or is it, or quite honestly, is it just that we're feeling rushed?
So, I, I don't know the sequence exactly, but the electrical needs to be set up, and then the dirt and...
Right, but doesn't that, doesn't that fall on the carousel?
Yes, but equipment and people on site, again, it's doable. I just like to notify people...
Sure.
And be organized and prepared. Now, so, you know, trucks on site is not unusual.
Right.
Um, but we do need to prepare children.
Right. I just, I, I don't, I don't want to have the carousel lose time in the name of a, I don't want to say clerical error, but...
So, we had an amendment in a second. Yeah, so, I've lost track of what the amendment was. You actually said dates, though, didn't you? Or no?
No, I didn't.
You didn't, okay. So...
You want...
We need to vote on the mo, on the amendment.
On the amendment, yeah.
So that would be to change the line, that, strike the line M, and replace it with, "A flat fee shall be donated to the district by September 15th." And it would allow Nancy to coordinate the dates under E. I'm taking into all of you what we just started to give you, I suppose.
So I guess what I would think about is, um, maybe if Troy and I could meet first thing tomorrow and hammer out the dates. Are you available to do that?
I will make myself available, yes, ma'am.
And there's also a difference between the week that you're asking for and the week in here. There's a week in between.
Right, that's why I'm...
To give the national, is in between.
A little bit of wiggle room to give Mullen Hall a little bit notice. I'm just worried about that, um, again, the lump sum on September 15th, if you're going until the 16th.
So make it, that's what I was going to say.
Oh, same thing.
Two weeks prior, two weeks after...
Right.
Cessation of...
Yeah, and that's so much, that's so much more wiggle room.
Gives them a little, right, agreed.
Okay.
That's what I said originally.
Two weeks after...
Which shall be payable in a lump sum, two weeks after...
After closing.
Close would be, or whatever.
If you...
Closing or taken down?
If, if you do the 19th, just out of discussion, does that give you enough time to set it up and get it licensed or sanctioned?
You're at the mercy of the Commonwealth, is what the problem is.
Uh, likely not, because we're, right, it, so, as I understand it, and I typically don't quarterback the, the setup, um, but it, it gets set up, our inspector comes in, once our inspector has certified that it's okay, we then contact our, the state inspector, who comes in, and after that occurs, then we got to literally walk it up to the State House to get the, the state license to operate for the season. So, the good news is, it's a fairly complex and drawn-out safety procedure to make sure that the, the operation is safe. The bad news is, it, in the wheels of government, I know better than most, turn fairly slowly.
And it takes you away from that Memorial Day weekend.
Yeah.
But it does give you more of an option.
Oh, we're, we're, listen, we're grateful for anything that we have. I, I think the suggestion, perhaps, that, that, you know, I'll, I'll be here bright and early tomorrow morning to sit down with the superintendent and to hammer out whatever we can do.
We'll hammer out the dates.
Okay, so, is everyone clear on what the amendment is? Okay.
Can you read the amendment, please?
Um, so it would, the amendment, Terri's amendment would strike line M and replace it with...
Flat fee.
A donation shall be made, a flat fee donation shall be made to the district payable two weeks after closing. And it'll strike E and allow Nancy to coordinate dates.
Can we do fee and donation? Is there a distinction between the two? I mean, wouldn't we want to call it a...
I think donation would be better.
Donation would be better.
Okay. And then we approve it, right? So then it comes to us as a school committee, right?
Oh, that would be a nice process.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Any abstentions? Okay, so it passes, and now we need to vote on the actual contract. Any last discussion before we vote? Okay. All in favor of approving the contract with the amended, as amended?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed?
Opposed.
There will be.
Okay. And any abstentions? Okay.
With the follow-up dates.
Thank you very much.
Whoo, that was a long way to go. All right. Thank you.
Tomorrow morning, what time works for you?
Do you want to share? You want to go in? Okay. Yep. I lost my agenda and I'll look that up. Okay, so next we have acting on the homeschool policy. We had this last time for our first read. Sonia, can you speak to it? Do you want to speak to it? Do you have anything you want to say?
Um, what color is it? It's, no, no, thank you. We did a little conversation last time and we did not make any changes from the first read, so thank you for your attention to this request.
Is there a motion to approve?
I will make a motion to approve the homeschool policy.
A second, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the homeschool policy?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Policy says, thank you.
Education policy, 1 HBG. Great, unanimous.
Thank you.
Next is our act on non-discrimination. That is yellow?
Yeah.
Yes. So this was a first read last time as well.
And so initially, at the first read, we presented three policies from Section J, which is the section on students. In the table on the yellow sheet that we presented to you is a broader representation of policies that include some form of this non-discrimination statement, including AC, which is approximately 10 pages in length and it's sort of the parent policy around anti-discrimination and harassment prevention for the district. So we've called those out because these are the various ones that are going to be impacted by this statement. And we've put on here that we are considering using the amended language for this statement in policy AC, which is the parent language, and then adding a cross-reference to these other policies referring back to the statement. So that if this needs to be done at a future time, we're not digging all the policies to find it. And then the other piece that we're considering is the last line on here, which is the idea of adding a footer to the policies, which would just bear that statement as most, outside of the policies, most of our documents do, the handbook, the program of studies, really most publications that are pretty lengthy and going home to families to represent the district includes that statement, as well as, you know, postings and hiring. So that is the statement. And then the other piece about the revised statement is that we scanned every way that the language was presented in each of these policies because there was some redundancy or classifications were represented by two different words and we tried to make it so it was concise and consistent across. And then we feel from the discussion from the first read that the last phrase or any other class protected by federal, state, or local law was important to, if other classes or groups are introduced into the law or the language, we would be covered in the interim until we add that to the list.
Right. Eventually, we would probably still go back and add them, but in the meantime, we'll be okay.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to...
I'll make a motion.
All right. Excellent, any discussion?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Yay.
Thank you, guys. I know policies have been really working hard.
Yes, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next we have, oh, man, I'm all kinds out of order. Next we have routine business, the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April 24th, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, corrections, anything to say about the minutes? All in favor of approving the minutes from the 24th?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Wonderful. Just in time. Report from you.
Okay, just quickly, lots of art celebrations going on throughout the district. I was in your school last night and they had these amazing chandeliers that they made out of bottles that they painted and they were so, I don't know if you, anybody went there last night, it was unbelievable. What a talented group over there. And I saw some of your daughter's work, which is really interesting. It was really neat. So I would just encourage you, if you can attend any of those, you will be really amazed at what our kids produce. And then I just need to update you that unfortunately, Tim McGlaughlin will be leaving the district at the end of the school year. He has been offered a position as a principal in West Bridgewater. And although I hate to see, I really hate to see him go, I wish him the very best. And unfortunately, he's been, he's a huge asset to this district and unfortunately, we're losing him. And I understand how and why he made that decision, so I wish him the very, very best of luck.
Report from directors.
Sonia, Char, anything that you would like to... No, thank you, but I'd be happy to answer questions.
Can we get to the bottom of the pile? I just, I want to acknowledge how hard you guys are working right now in all of your interviews with Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. If you guys looked at the schedule of those interviews, that is...
It was really long.
Lengthy and very much a stressful experience, so thank you for all your hard work with that. And I know that goes to kind of lots of the reports here.
Any questions for Sonia? Zach, anything you want to highlight?
Nothing specific, but I'll be happy answering questions.
Anything for Zach? Char? No?
No.
No questions for Charlie? He gets just, unfortunately...
I just want to just let you know that Charlie has a health, a very serious health issue in his family and that's why he's not with us tonight.
Send our thoughts. Cindy, you had some interesting stuff. Anything you want to hire, highlight about it?
No, but I'd be, I too will take any questions.
Some cool stuff in there. The E-rate thing is awesome.
I just want to show, I want to thank Cindy for sharing this. This, and I'll show it to everybody. This is Mike Falcone, now can monitor the performance of the computers in the district and whatnot.
Oh, is that one of the TVs?
Took one of the TVs and put it vertically. So I guess it was, he used to have...
It just happened yesterday. He was able to, to wall mount that as portrait rather than landscape. And right now, he monitors the district's network performance on a very small monitor split, so now he's got it wall mounted.
Cool. Awesome. Thanks. Johnny, anything you want to highlight?
I want to add that we've started negotiations with Food Service and Pastoral Maintenance, the teensters, and so that's all ready on foot and we've got a few dates scheduled.
Great. Any questions for Johnny? Patrick? Anything you want to highlight? Looks like good stuff going on for the summer, though.
Yeah, lots of work.
Any questions for Patrick?
We'll have new chairs, huh?
Yes.
That's exciting.
Town meeting, November.
I know.
Whoa. Yes, you're going to have to come.
I'll be sitting there.
There'll be a lot of people upset about that.
As a member of the public, right.
Did we have any conversations surrounding what to do with the old chairs?
Or whether or not we can actually sell them? Or I definitely won't.
Because I would definitely buy a pair.
I have not, I have not had any formal conversations, however, what I, what I have said to John Drew is do not let them get destroyed.
No.
Please do not move them or move them into a place that they're not going into.
Let's pay for a pod, like I...
Isn't there a fun fundraiser?
Well, that's kind of what we're thinking.
We can make one.
Actually, that came up with some private individuals at town meeting, that they would be willing to help us create something like that.
If there was a subcommittee, Nancy, I would like to be considered for that.
Yeah, I'll help too.
And I've already thought about where.
I know why I want my chair.
I totally know why I want my chair.
Two of them together.
We're going to drive up the price if we keep talking about it. Maybe we should.
It's too bad Mary's left or I guess we'd go to Tom, but he could make some money.
All right, reports from the chair. I only have one thing. I just have a thank you, because Walter, this is your last meeting.
Yeah.
And, you know, I've really enjoyed getting to know you over the last three years and I'm really appreciative for all that you've contributed to the district and I just wanted to say thank you.
I enjoyed working with all you people. It's been a pleasant experience. As I said, my family's demanding more of my time in Georgia, so...
Well, they deserve it. This is welcome from the committee. Hope you'll still come and visit us. You just won't have to stay until the bitter ends.
I don't think Walter's work here is done.
No, definitely not. We're going to hang on to him. He just won't be sitting at the table. He'll still be super involved. Any requests for agenda items or committee reports, follow-up information? John?
Just an update, Cape Cod Cooperative, we're currently recruiting for an Assistant Director of Special Education. So just get the word out, we're in the midst of that. Other than that, nothing else.
Yes.
I would like to give another shameless plug that the East Falmouth Elementary School June Jog is on, this time I have, is up and running. You can go to the website, you can go to social media, but all funds will go to the East Falmouth Elementary School's PTO that is currently helping to fund our outdoor classroom.
Awesome.
Everyone's favorite outdoor classroom.
The VIPS dinner, it's like such a bargain, $10, and you can pay through PayPal, which is so nice.